On our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. Thank you. The next item is the roll call. The clerk will call.
Press yes to indicate your presence. All members are present.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is public comment. We do have one person who is registered to speak, Thomas Brown.
I'm Thomas Brown. I live at 715 North Fifth Avenue, Wausau, Wisconsin. The item I want to address is under Human Resources and Finance, number 211213, regarding retention. And I want to first of all start by repeating myself on the COVID request that the city of Wausau require vaccinations for all employees. And I will repeat myself if everyone could either physically or mentally hold up three fingers. Those are the numbers of people that died in October who were vaccinated. And I'll count out the number who died who were not vaccinated. 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70. Does anyone have a question as to which is more, 70 or three? 70 people died who were not vaccinated, and you cannot retain a dead person. So I'm asking you again to, as a city, show leadership and either require mandatory vaccinations or make it so uncomfortable for employees to not be vaccinated that they will of their own volition choose to be vaccinated. It costs us $100,000 per police person, $100,000 per fire person. I don't want to have any of those people die. I've been going to committee meetings and will continue to do so. You all seem like pretty intelligent, reasonable people. Let's force people to be intelligent if they can't do it on their own. The second thing I want to comment on is the $1,000 bonus in retention. I'm glad to see that it's going to the, I think you call them the non-exempt people, those people who are not unionized, which would be not firefighters, not bus drivers, or not policemen. I think that's a nice thing to do, but I pay taxes on two pieces of property, about $500 on a lot and about $3,000 on a house. And I would rather that that $100,000 that you're spending on that one-time bonus is spent on something physical like roads or whatever might be a project I could touch and put my fingers on. Pay your employees appropriately. Don't give out bonuses.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we have communications. I'm going to just ad lib a second here. I want to make sure to introduce our new city clerk, Caitlin. So, welcome. This is your first city council meeting. I'm sure it'll be eventful. Thank you. All right. The next item on our communications is Clerk's appointments to the absentee Board of Canvassers for a term expiring December 31, 2023 pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes. 7.53, parent 2, parent A, 1. There's no action required, but we will put that on file. Thank you. All right. The next item we have is the consent agenda, File Number 211101 through File Number 180909. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion from Neil and a second from Herbst. Any discussion? Okay, looks like no discussion.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to the resolutions and ordinances portion of our agenda. We're on File Number 211203, Confirmation of Clerk's Appointments to Members of the Board of Election Officials for a Term Ending December 31, 2023. As you know, on this sheet, there's about maybe 80 people, so I'm not going to read through all of the names, but I hope you had an opportunity to check through them all. I would entertain a motion to accept. I have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? I don't see anybody requesting to speak.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to File Number 211206. It's a joint ordinance from CISM and Plan Commission annexing territory from the town of Stettin to the city of Wausau. This is Dean Grube, 311 North 36th Avenue. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Neil. Any discussion? Don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are on to File Number 211209. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving a lease agreement with Seth Carlson for property at 180 East Wausau Avenue. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Neil and a second, second by Killian. Everyone wants to talk about this one or at least second it. Any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, we have File Number 211109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the modification of fees to the City of Wausau Fees and Licenses Schedule adopted pursuant to Wausau Municipal Code 3.40.010, parent A. This is 2020 Comprehensive Fee Schedule. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Herbst. Any discussion? Yes, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For clarification, this lot aids on River Drive. Could I get some more details on that, please? And I read, quote, "We have received many complaints that the lot is unattractive." So, one, where are these complaints coming from? And then, could you, I take it to be Finance, Ms. Grood, could you provide some clarification, kind of a greater rationale for this, please?
So, the city had a parking study done by Walker Parking, I think it was in 2014, and their recommendation was that we create affordable parking lot for downtown employees to park in who were concerned about the cost of parking. So that lot was not heavily used, and so we reduced the price to $5 a month. And it has not made an impact as we had hoped. We have very few people use the parking lot as daytime parking to use for going to work. Basically, it has become a storage facility. There's, I don't know if you've driven by there, but there's, you know, a multitude of campers and trailers parked there. As, in addition, there are cars that, for whatever reason, people aren't using on a regular basis. And so if you drive by there, particularly now that it snows, you can see the cars aren't moving, and it really is unsightly. And so we've been getting complaints from some of the neighbors and just from, you know, people in the downtown that they are unhappy with its appearance. And it is very difficult today. You know, we migrated to a license plate-based enforcement system, and many of the trailers right now don't have a license plate, so it makes it difficult for us to communicate with enforcement whether they've paid their permits or not because that system, basically, once the plate is in there, you know, that's how we tell whether they've made their payments for their permits. So the whole thing isn't working as it was designed to. And we do have inexpensive parking in the Jefferson ramp. The sixth level is $5, and the fifth level is $15 a month. And those are the areas where the downtown employees are electing to park because it's much more convenient for them from a walkable standpoint. People are opposed, you know, there is kind of a hill there if you're coming from River Drive to try to get up into the downtown. And so I think, you know, from a convenience and effort standpoint, people just are choosing not to go to park there because it's just too far of a walk.
Thank you. And is this on River Drive, the parking lot where the Outreach Task Force bus is currently located?
Yes.
Yes. So how would that impact them?
So I believe today, the Police Department authorized free parking for them because of their nonprofit affiliation, so it would not impact them.
But other than the Outreach Task Force, it looks like you're looking at an annual rate that could go up from $55 to $440 for some?
Yes, because, you know, if you think about it today, people are electing to park their campers there because it is so affordable, and there are other choices in the private sector, I guess. You know, I mean, there's those garages and storage units that people can choose or they can have it, you know, wrapped and stored outside at a lot of facilities. And so they're electing to use our site downtown because it is so cheap. And it's really not the place that you want long-term storage, you know, from a, I think if you, if the city planner was here, he would say that's not an appropriate use for a downtown parking lot.
Thank you. And I would tend to, in this case, disagree, and it's in my district. So I will be opposing these fee changes just based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, could you please come up? I had some questions for you. Thank you. I tend to drive on River Drive every once in a while, and I guess I have been looking at the lot over a period of years. And from what I recollect, it is very older asphalt that has not been repaved. Is that correct?
Yes.
So where would you put it in the realm of, on your list to repave? Is it something you're thinking about in a few years from now, or?
We don't really have a timeline for it. We have been watching it, I know, but the lot doesn't get a lot of use, so we haven't put a high priority on it, which is the reason, you know, we haven't directed funds to go there because it doesn't get a high volume of use.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alder Wadenski.
Regarding this lot, the fee structure seems a little high to me also. I'm not opposed to somewhat of an increase, but if the problem is these trailers, maybe it could be sent to CISM or another committee, and we can alleviate that problem and that committee somehow maybe put some restrictions on parking. Is that possible?
We could do that, and we contemplated that. So we met Eric Cordbuckner, who's a lieutenant for the Police Department, and Nate Miller from the City Attorney's Office, and we considered all of those options. And I guess this was the choice of the group, that they preferred to do this rather than create an ordinance that prevented trailers. Because we do have situations where we do not have concern about trailers parking because, for example, you know, by the hotel, you'll have a group, like we've had groups come in that are doing bike trips, and they're biking from location to location throughout the state. Trailers typically follow those groups because, you know, if they have a bike breakdown or they're carrying their luggage or whatever, they'll park at, in a parking lot, but it's on a short-term basis. It's not long-term storage. So that was one of, I guess, the issues that we were trying to consider when we were looking at how to adopt an ordinance. So I guess when we weighed an ordinance change and the implication on some of these short-term trailers that are parking versus just setting the fees so that it would drive people to consider other parking choices for their campers, this was considered the preferred method from a staff perspective.
Okay. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I think it bears mentioning. I think when we talked about trailer parking, there's not a whole lot that I think CISM is going to necessarily manage with that only because a couple of years ago, I had asked for us to create a permit process whereby on a case-by-case basis, we would allow trailers, you know, a few feet longer than what we allow today, to be kept on residential property where the lot can accommodate the trailer without obstructing people's vision in and out of the neighboring driveways or bothering the neighbors because there are some larger lots where that could happen. And Bill Hebert and his team did actually work on that project. They believed it could be managed. There weren't so many of them in the city that it would create a terrible amount of work for them. However, when that proposal got to the Plan Commission, it was denied. And that becomes a zoning issue. And so, you know, even if we wanted in CISM to allow people to, you know, park a, you know, 31-foot trailer instead of a 29 on a yard that could accommodate it, that answer is no. So I think Marathon Park also still allows storage of recreational equipment in the Exhibition Building for a fee. I mean, there's options for people other than leaving them outside in this parking lot. So, you know, I guess if the fee becomes a bit of a deterrent, I can live with that because I think there's other ways people can manage this. And prior to the slot's existence, they were doing that. So, but I guess just a point that I think it's more than one committee action if we wanted to approve something like that.
Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, and states this in the packet, it talks about deterring this quote-unquote "behavior", and this is a legal behavior. It's not an untoward behavior. I think the government has to be very cautious based on some relative metric of aesthetics from the downtown crowd, whatever that means. We have to be very careful. The government does not use fiscal elements like this to essentially price citizens out from using a property in a very milquetoast way. So I think, you know, this is a slippery slope, and if it's an afford, you know, provides a utility for citizens, and apparently it does because someone's trying to stop that, I think that we should not be using essentially financial penalties to price out regular folks from using city property. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Wadenski?
If this lot is going to be intended and has been intended for employees of the downtown to use and have reasonable parking, and with redevelopment, that's possibly coming in the possibility of more businesses, I think we should probably keep the rate reasonable for that parking lot. If that's the closest one that employees have to get to the downtown and park at a reasonable price. And then maybe have no parking from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m., so the lot has to be empty then. That's an option.
Okay, thank you. Alder Watson?
So, speaking to Alder Rasmussen's point, what was the rate before when it was used more, I guess, appropriately?
Before we moved it down to the $5, I don't recall, but I would imagine that it was, you know, similar to some of the other lots. And I can, you know, go and see if I could find that for you. But it really, like I said, we never really saw much use from the downtown employees parking there again because they, it's, you know, a difficult walk up. And I think the other thing is if we did prevent overnight parking, then there would be, for example, the nonprofit that's across the street, they would, you know, have to move their vehicle and they're using that as an overnight storage. You know, they use it during the day, but they park it overnight. So, you know, we did debate that, too. And $15 a month is still an affordable rate for a car. So, you know, it really is the, you know, council's choice. We were just reacting to the difficulty of enforcing the lot because of the lack of license plates and that it is becoming unsightly because people are using it basically as a junkyard and long-term storage.
Okay, unless there are any other comments, I think that we are ready to vote on the resolution authorizing the modification of the fee schedule.
And you may begin voting. Motion passes 8 to 3.
Thank you. We are now on to File Number 031110. It's a joint resolution from HR and Finance approving an amendment to the part-time, temporary, and seasonal pay schedule. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Watson. Any discussion here? Don't see any.
Okay, you may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. We are now on to File Number 120219. It's another joint resolution from HR and Finance approving an adjustment to the vacation accrual schedule in Section 8.04 Vacation of the Employee Handbook. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Rasmussen. Is there a second? Second by Herbst. Any discussion? Alder Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These next two items, I've spent an extensive amount of time this afternoon studying. And it'd be, if we lived in a perfect world, you know, we wouldn't, we'd all, it's tough that we're both, we have two sides of the fence working on the same fence, you know? And I'm going to support this one because of the fact that I believe the unions can negotiate their own vacations and the non-represented employees can't. So for this one, I'm going to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay.
Begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. We are now on to File Number 211213. It's another joint resolution from HR and Finance approving a one-time lump-sum additional compensation to designated non-represented employees. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Herbst. Alder McElhany?
Hi, I have a couple of things to say. Thank you. There has been a ton of confusion, a ton of misinformation all floating around about this. And I have talked to a lot of people in the last couple of weeks since before Thanksgiving when this started. I want to make it clear, I do not, HR Committee was tasked with, by Finance and CISM, early on, on narrow scope, find some kind of solution for the non-represented employees as a retention and recruitment tool now. That's what we did. We took it to HR, it went to, it went back to, I believe, the Budget Committee. It went back to HR and then back to Finance. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. We did the best we could trying to be as fair as possible. And it connects with the other aspect of what we did. We took away two steps for the entry employees coming in. And so what we had was compression, as we have when people start hire and the people that have been here stay here. So the idea was a lump-sum payment. Unfortunately, the word "bonus" came in, and then it became triggering. We had, all of a sudden, it got mixed into pandemic and COVID and hazard pay, which the HR Committee never, ever mentioned. It was never meant to be that way. It was never meant to be a bonus to provide some employees as recognition for COVID and others not. That has never been our HR Committee's focus. And I can clearly say that our HR Committee is looking to pay good wages to all employees, represented or non-represented. That is our goal. It is not to pit one against the other or slide money under one, you know, under the desk to one and wink-wink to the other. That's not our goal at all. And so with that, with the confusion, with the calls I received, with the accusations of being union versus non-union, I am making an amendment motion to refer this back to the HR Committee. Due to the problem of some of the language used, including the word "bonus", it has been misconstrued, and now it is misconstrued in the public sphere, and it's not good. And I don't want our employees the butt of this at this point, and I think they are. I don't want to pit employee against employee. So I am asking to refer this back to HR to clear up the misunderstandings. But I also want to make sure that when I ask for the refer back, it is the small scope of looking at wages for, this was supposed to be for 2021, by the way, but this is for that, what we were asked for. I do not want to look at the, any pandemic or hazard pay. That was not our task at the time. So I think it needs to be clarified, and the adjustment and eligibility needs to be clarified for the public transparency at this point. I think that it is too muddled, and I fear that no matter which way this council goes tonight, it will be negative. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to refer back to the HR Committee.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Rasmussen. Okay, we're now on the topic of referring this back to HR. Alder Larson, would you like to talk about that topic?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would. And thank you. I am all in full agreement of this because, you know, the way I first supported this and now I'm having second thoughts because of the division it would cause amongst the employees, I kind of feel that, you know, in this case, why is the non-represented employees entitled to something when the represented employees are not, you know? And I don't, I don't mean for us as a committee or a council to exercise any divisive measures in our workforce. I mean, we're working, you know, tirelessly to work in the best interests of our employees of this city. And as this is right here, I don't think this is in the best interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The motion that you're voting on right now is, oh, nope, okay, is to refer the one-time lump-sum additional compensation back to the HR Committee if there are no more comments. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, yes, this should be sent back at least to HR and maybe Finance after that. But I think that, you know, and I'm sure it was not intended by my colleague when we talk about things were quote-unquote "misconstrued", I think it would be better put that perhaps some worked on this and the consequence was unintended. That may be the better term because I think whether it was intended or not, the consequence of this was nevertheless real. And the consequence of that, as I had discussed or given comment on it, I believe it was the Finance Committee, is it does essentially segment and kind of create disparate treatment among employees, particularly based on the grouping of union or not-union. And that's why I said in the Finance meeting that this appeared to be the, we're essentially paying you to not be in a union bonus, you know, because it seems to just equalize the difference. And what might be more valuable for the city at this time is to use this as a coachable moment that, as I had talked about, statistically, it's not unusual that union contracts reap better benefits and payments for workers, and that is the economic utility of being in a union. And it's not just that those contracts tend to be better, it's that the non-union contracts tend to be deficient. So, yes, please send this back somewhere. But I think in terms of not just clarifying language, I'd like to see, you know, that this disparity is neutralized. And so when it is sent back, I'd like to see the fiscal components of giving this to all employees, represented and non-represented. My understanding was relative to the millions of dollars we throw at high-end development. we throw at high-end developments and wealthy developers, that the addition of funds to cover all employees, represented and nonrepresented, is actually relatively little compared to those other fiscal faux pas that the city has made. So I'd like to see that. And I think that would be a positive step forward. And in conclusion, you know, a citizen had given comment that he would like to see the quote-unquote "bonus" given to something kind of concrete that you can touch. Well, I assure you, all the roads and, you know, the outcomes of safety and making sure buildings don't burn to the ground, those are all things that you can touch. And it's not based on dollar bills or machines. Those are the humans that make sure the city runs, and those humans are workers, both union and non-union. So yes, let's send this back, but let's make sure everybody's covered. Thank you.
All right, the motion to, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that this is also a sound decision. I think it needs to be reevaluated, I think, specifically for the terminology. I think once the word "bonus" came out, I think that that did create a volume of misunderstandings, and that all was snowballed and compounded by communications that were issued not only from our organized labor unions, but from local labor councils and both chiefs of our public safety departments. So that said, I think that it does need some work. And I think whenever you have groups of workers who have the ability to negotiate every two years and groups that never can, you automatically have disparity, whether you wanted it or not. And so I think that, you know, this doesn't need to be about union versus non-union and fairness versus unfairness. It needs to be about figuring out what the consequences are of that disparity, especially in the work group that has no power to negotiate. So I will fully support the refer back.
All right, everyone, we are on the motion to refer this item about the one-time lump sum. Back to the HR Committee. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are now on to file number 211207. This is a resolution from the Parks and Recreation Committee authorizing the approval of a Wassa Marathon County Parks Recreation and Forestry sponsorship policy and a Wassa Marathon County Parks Recreation and Forestry naming guidelines and criteria on behalf of the city. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Larson. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this one.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on to file number 160704. It's a resolution from the Wassa Water Works Commission approving the application for an administration of funds from the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Herbst. Do I have a second? Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion here? Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been in discussion with some other members in the community that were concerned about the lead lateral replacement. And could, Eric, could you explain, will this be part of it, that we do have some neighbors, and I guess in some recent quarterly information, one lead lateral replacement cost about $14,000 or $17,000, which I don't even think wealthy homeowners would have, would have some difficulty. And at a certain point, that there are some neighbors that do not want to be told that they have to do the lead lateral, or have it done within a year, that there could be some options of how to filter the system that may be a lot more inexpensive as a way to do that and make it safe. So could you explain a little bit more?
The resolution that's in front of you is actually to allow us to apply for the forgivable loan for the lead service line replacement, which we've done for the last three or four years in funding. So now the DNR, rather than multiple years, they want us to request on an annual basis. So as long as funding is available, this resolution will have to come back here on an annual basis for approval to do that.
I was told that one of our city attorneys was looking to put a provision in that, or maybe this is another proposal that you're, we're not talking about tonight, that, and it may be a requirement both of the states and the feds, that we go lead-free within a certain period of time, and that if homeowners do not do that, that their water could be turned off if they do not fulfill that. That's not the language in this proposal at this point.
No, nope.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. It looks like we are ready to vote on applying for the Safe Water Drinking Loan Program.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. This is the part where I will ask you to suspend the rules. 6B filing and 12A referral of resolutions. This does require a two-thirds vote majority. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Watson. Do I have a second? Second by Peckham.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 191113. It's an ordinance from Plan Commission amending Section 23.01.23, definitions, Section 23.02.04, interpretation of zoning district boundaries, Section 23.03.28, accessory land uses and structures, Sections 23.10.21, notice of public hearings, Section 23.10.22, public meetings, Section 23.10.31, zoning map amendment, Section 23.10.44, planned unit development review and approval procedure. This did pass at Plan Commission unanimously. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Neil, and I have a second by someone, Watson. All right, Alder Ryan.
Excuse me, Mayor, but I thought above it in blue is to suspend Rule 6B filing and 12A referral of resolution, two-thirds vote required. I don't think--
You did vote on that unanimously. Right before this.
When did we do it?
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any discussion on this ordinance from Plan Commission? I'm not seeing anybody.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 211213. It's a resolution approving the city's waiver of first right of refusal to repurchase property at 715, 717, 719, 721, and 723 South 72nd Avenue from the Fong Family LLC. I don't know Attorney Jacobson, if you'd like to just brief what we're doing here, just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Does anyone have any questions? Alder Killian?
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. I just had one question. I saw that it's Fong Family LLC, and that was the same entity that recently on Grand Avenue, the Community Partners Campus took over that property. And I see that the registered agent is Mr. Rose Mergie, and there was also some other properties that have kind of been at play lately in regard to that entity and individual. My question would be, is there some reason that they're dispersing these properties at all at the same time that we know of, or is this just something routine?
I have no idea why the LLC decided to sell the property before the end of the year, but they do need, through a title check discovered, that they do need the city's consent to waive the right to repurchase because of the consistent deed restrictions that we've recorded against all of the properties.
Thank you.
So I don't know the reason for the sale, just the request to exercise our right or decline it.
Thank you.
I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Larson. Is there any discussion here? I'm not seeing anybody.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 010904. It's a resolution approving termination of recorded deed restrictions and recording set of revised deed restrictions for 500 North 72nd Avenue and 7300 International Drive. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Herbst. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, I don't see anybody.
May begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on to file number 211212. It's a resolution approving the hiring of special counsel and authorizing the city attorney to hire and manage outside legal counsel engaged to advise the Ethics Board in the matter of the complaint of William Harris against older person Deborah Ryan. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Herbst. Is there a second? Second by Watson. Just to remind everybody, this is a very narrow scope. We are just authorizing the hire of an attorney, Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to say that, for myself, I do not plan on voting for this, and that there are some other Alders, as well as the mayor--
Point of order.
--are part of this.
Point of order. There's a point of order that has been called. Okay, I guess I would want to ensure that we are just focused very narrowly on the scope of whether or not this body will authorize the hiring of an outside attorney, rather than any substantial discussion of the topic.
Could you say it again, so I can hear you and understand you?
Right now, we are only talking about whether or not we will hire an outside attorney. We are not going to talk about any of the topic surrounding the ethics complaint.
Well, again, there are other parties involved before I got involved.
Okay.
And so I would expect they would want to, to not--
Excuse me.
--vote, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Isn't this a closed-session item?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
If you're going to abstain, would you mind pushing the button that says you're abstaining? Thank you.
Motion passes nine to one with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment and suggestions. If there's anybody that would like to take their three minutes, you are welcome to approach the podium at this point. Okay. Okay, all right. Next up, we have an option to go into closed session. If there's somebody who is willing to make that motion and read the information here, I would entertain that. Okay, I have Alder Martins.
All right. I make a motion we go into closed session pursuant to Chapter 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C of the Wisconsin statutes considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And Chapter 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G of the Wisconsin statutes conferring legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding a bus operator.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Herbst. Looks like we're ready to vote on this.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we will be going into closed session and will come out if necessary.